Yeah, you, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good way to, without a badge, let everyone know where, where you're going.
Exactly, well, there's always this pin as well.
Do you actually work at the branch?
Oh, yeah, um, I'm the interim branch manager.
Cool. Oh, um, what's his name retired?
Stan retired a couple of years ago, yeah. He's still a regular customer.
He came last year, I feel.
Um, last year would have been Sarah Bartlett, um, and two years, yeah, two years ago would be Stan, and then for many, many, many years before that would have been Stan.
Yeah, I just remember he comes every time we give out the grant.
Yeah.
He gives us the most.
Yeah, well, it's for good reasons. He got to retire and retire his retirement.
Something to look forward to, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Cool. Well, thank you for coming.
Of course, my pleasure.
Okay, good evening. We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. I believe Dr. Daley's on his way, so he'll catch up when he gets here. We'll start out with the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Councilman Jindal.
Good morning.
Councilman Leonard.
Here.
Councilman Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Duper.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
Yes, sir. I would like to delete item two A. The, uh, the principal from the elementary school cannot be here tonight, and I would like to add one item under the report of officer. We need some, uh, some elected official to be on the SCAC, and also JPIA, so I would like to add it at the end. And for the consent calendar, calendar, I would like to pull number three F. I would like to explain, uh, the decision on, uh, award of contract on item three F.
Okay. All right, yeah, at this point, we'll go ahead and do the invocation of Pledge of Legions. Dr. Leonard, would you please lead us? Okay, this is the part of our program where anyone from the public can speak on an item that is not on the agenda. I have one speaker so far. If you would like to speak on a non-agendized item, please turn in a slip, and we'll start with Mr. Osa.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me time to speak with the upcoming elections. I wish the council and all the candidates the very best of luck and hope that the new season, uh, the new sessions will be as dynamic and, uh, friendly for allowing us to speak with you. One of the things that I want to mention is that, uh, as I look through my ballot and vote and decide, I wish there would be more openness and transparency with our elected official and access and response. That would be most appreciated, and thank you very much for giving me the time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to item two B.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, every year we have a, uh, a recommendation for the city council to approve the proposed projects for the CDBG grant, and again, this year, the city have a total funding of a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, of which, uh, for public service project, we have proposal from, uh, our county library here for ten thousand dollars, and for the city projects of, uh, a hundred and thirty-one thousand to replace sidewalk handicap ramps at various locations. And tonight, we have the, the manager from the county library, Minky Ballon, so, so, to give us an update on, on how she's doing at the, uh, at the library. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jarb, and, um, good evening, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Minky Ballen. I'm the interim branch manager at the Loma Linda branch of the San Bernardino County Library. Um, so we are right next door, and if you're not already a regular, I do invite you to come check out our, um, resources and programs for all ages. Um, I had a short commute, so I got here early. Um, so I'm really grateful for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about our adult literacy program. It is one of my favorite parts of my job. Um, the goal of our literacy program is to assist adults who want to improve their basic reading and writing skills or their digital literacy. Um, and learners meet one-on-one with tutors on their own schedules, and we adapt the program to the personal goals of each learner. Um, so whatever it is that they want to be able to do with reading and writing that they can't do currently or that they would like to improve upon. Um, so, um, of course, the goals do vary. Um, some examples of common goals that come up would be, um, writing a resume, um, applying for a job, being able to, um, learn basic computer and internet skills, um, reading to children or helping them with their homework, um, or reading and writing for personal growth. Um, the adult literacy program meets the national objective of public service to those with low or moderate income. Um, our branch serves the community of Loma Linda. Participants are assisted with completing the city's beneficiary qualification statement in which they document their low to moderate family income status. And our adult literacy program serves a community in need. In San Bernardino County, it's estimated that there are three hundred thousand adults who would benefit from basic literacy assistance. Um, that means that they would like to be able to better read job applications, voting ballots, medication instructions, or bedtime stories. And of course, um, the more that they increase their own literacy skills, the more that they're able to pass that on to the next generation as well. Um, the adult literacy program provides unduplicated services. While the local community colleges provide citizenship, GED, and ESL classes, um, our adult literacy program provides free individualized instruction by volunteer tutors. Um, so far this fiscal year, our adult literacy program has already provided a hundred and ten hours of instruction, I'm happy to say. Um, and then to give a personal example of the impact, one of our learners was a dentist who was originally from Brazil, um, and she did need to redo her schooling and able to, in order to be able to, um, practice in the United States. Um, so it's working together with her tutor. She gained the literacy skills that she needed to, um, submit those, um, applications. Um, she ultimately was offered two different fellowships, one in the state of Georgia and one right here at Loma Linda University, and she chose to remain here and attend Loma Linda University. Um, with continued support, um, from the city of Loma Linda, we look forward to helping more adults like her to reach their literacy goals as individuals, workers, family members, and community members. Um, so thank you so much for this chance to speak with you, and thank you so much for your continued support for our program, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
You, you mentioned at the beginning, you said something digital, and I just caught a little bit of it. Do you offer any type of, um, like, computer stuff like that? Okay.
Yeah.
Can you tell us about that?
Absolutely. So, um, so, um, some adults come to us wanting to work on reading and writing, and, um, some want to work on what's called digital literacy, um, and that means, um, very basic introductory computer skills. Um, you know, how to use a mouse, um, how to use a keyboard, um, things like that, and then going, building up from there to, um, basic internet skills, how to use email, how to use a web browser, um, how to basically, um, get connected, because we do consider that a form of literacy in today's modern world.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Wow, okay. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Do you still have a youth literacy program where you get In-N-Out burgers for reading twenty books?
We sure do. Uh, we have our In-N-Out, um, program coming up in a couple of months, and, um, right now, we actually have a new partnership, um, with Raising Canes, um, so a similar program, um, for zero to seventeen-year-olds. For every five books that they check out from the library and read, they can earn a kid's meal. Um, so, yeah, definitely come and, um, see us and get signed up.
Well, that's cool. All right, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Uh, Jarb, I just had a couple of questions. So usually, we have, like, Inland Temporary Homes and others that apply for our CDBG grants. What happened?
What happened is that they received the money from the, uh, uh, CDBG, uh, federal COVID-19 grant that they still have to spend. So I did contact them, and then they, they still have money they have not spent yet.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Yeah, cool. Uh, few comments and a few questions. So I'm really proud that we're able to give this block grant. We have the library, obviously. Uh, adult literacy programs were mentioned. I mentioned the youth literacy program. That had a really big personal effect on me when I was growing up, um, because of those In-N-Out burgers and the other incentives that were offered. Uh, by the time I was in fifth grade, I was three grade levels above in reading. That's all because of public libraries. Uh, I wish we could fund public libraries even more because I know it impacts a large variety of, not just students, but students of all ages. So I'm happy that we're able to give the amount that we're able to give. With the other city project that we have, the access ramps and sidewalk, so this was something that came in front of the city council, I think, August of last year. Um, an individual had brought up a concern about it. And thank you, Jarb, for, you know, finding funding, one way or another, to address that concern. We didn't do it right away because it takes time, but we're doing it now. Now, to my questions. What is the process if we want to get something onto a, um, involved with the CDBG program?
Yes, e- every year, the county has a call for projects, uh, for grant, and then they, they send out application, and, uh, the applicant has to submit this application to the county, and the county will go through the process to see if, if those proposals meet the minimum requirement. If they do, they will send it to us, and, and we will present it to the council, and the city council select, uh, which, uh, program that we can help funding. For example, in the past, we have a lot of people that apply, and a lot of time is, we can allow up to fifteen percent of the total, uh, uh, grant, and then we always give the grant to the county library, the Inland Temporary Home, who provide the, uh, housing for the homeless women and children, and the, uh, the senior center lunch program. So it's always provide that, that services.
And when is the deadline for consideration?
I, I don't have the number in front of me, but I'd be happy to share that with you.
Okay, um, so I think the deadline's passed, right?
Correct.
For now, okay. For the next year, if we can consider, um, I know you mentioned the lunch program at the senior center, but if we can also include other activities for the senior center? The ten thousand dollars that is going to the library, that is about the budget our senior center has after we take out the property and, um, electric. Um, just talking to residents, there's a big demand, not only for senior activities, but also involving veterans, so if we're able to incorporate that with some CDBG funding, I think that would be a great win for the city. So if we can consider that for the next round. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to, to C. Oh.
I moved to, um, allocate ten thousand dollars to the San Bernardino County Library and a hundred and thirty-one thousand to replace access ramps and sidewalk citywide through the Community Development Block Grant Project.
Madam Clerk.
Motion is to approve the fund allocations for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five CDBG programs for, as follows. The public service project, the San Bernardino County Library, ten thousand. The city project, replace access ramps and sidewalks citywide for one hundred and thirty-one thousand for a total of one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, um, for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Please vote. Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, now on to two C.
Is it weed abatement? Matt?
Council members, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Matt Dingman. I'm the fire inspector for the City of Loma Linda Fire Department, and I'm here to present the official report on the twenty-twenty-three fall weed abatement program. Uh, it is my recommendation that the city council receive this report and approve it and account for the costs and to adopt the accompanying resolution and establish liens and assessments on the properties. The weed abatement program for fall twenty-twenty-three started on September twentieth and concluded on the twenty-second. Initially, uh, three hundred approximate parcels were inspected. A hundred and fifty-eight notices to clean property that you can see in exhibit A were sent out to the owner of record, provided to us by the county assessor's office. Uh, they were sent by regular mail on October second. Uh, we had two return notices. Um, after the November second and third follow-up inspections were concluded, and seven parcels were, uh, abated by the city contractor as well. On January third of twenty-twenty-four, you can see in exhibit B, specifying costs of the work performed by the contractor plus the city's administrative fees, were mailed to the owner of record for each parcel, giving them the opportunity to make payment by tonight on February thirteenth. Uh, right now, exhibit C are the list of unpaid invoices. Uh, there was a change made today. We had one payment made today and one payment made on Thursday. I made additional copies. If you all would like to see the updated, uh, list of invoices, if you'd like. If not, that's fine, too. Um, so you'll see on exhibit C, the first two line items, those were the last two that were paid. So we currently have four outstanding weed invoices. Subsequent to the February thirteenth hearing tonight, the report of costs with accompanying resolution will be forwarded to the Property Tax Division of the San Bernardino County Auditor and Controller for collection of assessments and/or liens against the property. There were no environmental adverse, uh, impacts for the weed abatement program for the fall of twenty-twenty-three, and that concludes my official report for tonight. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We have a first?
Second.
We have a, it's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing, I.
I withdraw my second.
Open the public hearing. Generally, we're always at usually about four or five properties that, that we pass along.
Yes.
Nothing inconsistent with what we see normally. It's usually the same names.
It is, give or take.
Okay, seeing nobody rushing to the front to talk about this, we'll close the public hearing. And, uh, Mr. Jindal, you have a comment?
Question.
Yes, sir.
So with these properties that we're inspecting, is it, um, are these city properties or are they personal?
Uh, both. We have some city properties that are taken care of by the Public Works Department or the Water Department, and private residents are asked to clean their own parcels, and if they deny to do that process, then we hire a third-party contractor.
Okay, and how are we determining that it's a hazard?
Uh, anything, we go off of the California Fire Code. Our current edition is twenty-twenty-two. Um, anything that would be, would be considered to be dead, um, combustible vegetation over four inches.
So is it someone from the fire department that's driving around and inspecting properties?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, the reason I ask these questions is there is one resident who is concerned that we're not mowing, e- essentially mowing their property, uh, but it's their personal property. Uh, I drove by it the other day, and it's definitely overgrown, but I don't know if it falls into the combustible, uh, arena. If, it, if that is an issue, um, you would have already identified it and addressed it with the property owner, is that correct?
Yes, that is the usual process. If there's anything that perhaps is missed outside of the spring and fall timeline that we follow, I can write, uh, handwritten notices to send out to property owners as well.
Around what time do we usually do the inspections?
Spring and fall. Uh, so fall, like I mentioned, it began in September and concluded this evening. Uh, it will start again for spring twenty-twenty-four roughly around, I think, July or a little earlier. I'd have to double-check my timeline for spring.
And we're only inspecting what's visible, right? So front yards, obviously, you can't, you're not going into backyards.
No, no. Uh, I do respond to citizen complaints. I will go out and take a look at things, and if necessary, write a report, uh, or a, a notice to send out, uh, but for the most part, it is open, uh, parcels.
Got it. And then my last question, which you've already answered, we would only address, um, greenery, shrubbery, whatever you want to call it, if it poses a fire hazard.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And just a little comment. The dirty little secret here is that it's, a lot of these property owners know it's cheaper for us to clean it up, and so they. And so they just wait and let us do it and let us pass along the cost to them. So it's, some of this is intentional and that's why we see the same names over and over and over again.
Unfortunately.
All right, thank you very much. We did have willing to make the same motions?
Second.
Dr. Daly? Okay. First and a second?
Thank you. Motion to receive the report for fall, for the Fall 2023 Weed Abatement Program. Approve the report and accounting costs and adopt Council Bill R-202403, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, adopting a report and statement of expenses for the Fall 2023 Weed Abatement Program and imposing a lien upon property for payment therefore. Please vote. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, we have the public hearing on this council bill, O2024-01.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm going to give a brief introduction and then I'll pass it along for the presentation. So two years ago this very month, this council adopted the city's housing element update. Since then, staff has navigated through two minor corrections letters with the state's Housing and Community Development Department. Their latest request, which is being presented tonight, marks the third and hopefully the final one. Upon adoption, we anticipate receiving the coveted certification. So joining us tonight via Zoom is Laura Stetson from MIG. She's the very same consultant who guided us through the housing element project. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Laura for her presentation.
Thank you, Lorena. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, if you could hold on just a sec, I think we are waiting for the, Lorena, am I sharing my screen?
Not yet.
Okay. And while we're doing this, I apologize that this program can't offer incentives like your library does for In-N-Out and and Raising Can for the kids. Sounds like a really great program.
Well, I was wondering why I saw Dr. Daly at the library yesterday, but now it's all explained.
Is it up on the screen, Lorena? I can't see.
No, it's not.
Okay.
IT working on it right now.
Okay.
There we go. Oh, sorry, incorrect PowerPoint.
Do you want me to go ahead and share?
Yes, go ahead and see if you can just share it and take control.
Okay.
Lorena, as they're working this out, can we just get a point of clarification? This is different than the item we looked at a couple of weeks ago, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I think we're good to go, Lorena. Is that correct?
We're good to go.
Okay, and thank you while we worked, walked through that. For the record, my name is Laura Stetson. I'm a principal with MIG. We're an urban planning firm based in Berkeley, but I work out of our Pasadena and San Diego offices. The proposal before you this evening is a minor update to the Development Code to address a particular program in the adopted housing element. And the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, has indicated that the city needs to take this final step of a code amendment before the city can be, can receive a, as Lorena called it, the coveted letter of certification from the Department of Housing and Community Development. And so this evening, quickly, we will walk through the purpose of the code amendment, identify what sites in the city that are in the housing element will be subject to this program, and then present the the action to you. As I said, the large purpose of this code amendment is to comply with state law. There's a provision in state law that directly addresses what cities need to do to make sure that they have compliant housing elements. And the housing element adopted two years ago very specifically indicated that the city would do this program. The catch was that we were under the understanding that it could be done after certification. But HCD has said, no, they've really cracked down on things and said, no, this needed to occur before they could find the element and compliant with state law. Just a quick primer on your housing element and what it does require. It does require that the city provide zoning capacity for a range of units at various income levels totaling just over 2,000 units, as this slide shows. And it indicates that of those 2,051 units, 834 of them need to be on, need to be available for very low and low-income households. And those would be households that are earning less than 80% of the San Bernardino County median income. Just for interest, that was $77,423 for for 2023. This map indicates all of the sites that are shown in the housing element as sites suitable for redevelopment. Many of them are within special planning areas and the Grove's specific plan in particular. As you can see down in the lower left-hand corner of the exhibit, some are also vacant sites that are up in the hillside areas at a very low density. And so anything that you see in those yellow or or green colors or things that are in a very low density, roughly, single-family homes with multifamily housing really concentrated to the north side of the railroad tracks. There are some quirks in state law that say if you are identifying sites for future housing, if you've identified them over the last 16 years roughly as housing sites and they haven't developed yet, you've really got to prove the case that they could, that they're going to be developed during this planning period of 2021 to 2029. And if you, if they're being quote reused, then you have to adopt a code amendment as an incentive that says if a proposal comes in with at least 20% of the units available for lower-income housing, that project has to be approved as a matter of right. It has to comply with all of the development standards, but it would not be subject to any discretionary process. And this was a law that was adopted many years ago and has kind of been made a little, I don't want to say obsolete, but kind of superfluous because now there is already a by right approval requirement for a larger set of of applications. But anyway, nonetheless, there is a requirement of state law that this has to be complied with. In Loma Linda, the sites that would be subject to this rule would be largely zoned for multifamily housing. That would be your R3 and R4 zone, your institutional zone, which does allow housing with a conditional use permit, and your planned community zone. That's where your specific plans are. It would also apply in any single-family zone where more than one unit, several more than one unit, because as we've said, it applies if you're proposing at least 20% of the the units as low income. And it's kind of hard to propose 20% of of one unit. But in in the attachment to your staff report, there was a complete listing of all of the sites that would be subject to this new ordinance amendment. There were 162 sites that would, that were identified and 90 of those are zoned for multifamily housing. Now, what is this requirement by right? What does it mean? It's a ministerial approval, but it can be subject to design review. It means there's no discretionary review, provided that it complies with all of the development standards in the Development Code, including these objective design standards that the city adopted about a year and a half ago. The project would not be subject to environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. There would be exceptions for sites that would require subdivision of land. That would be like a single-family subdivision or a condo development that had an associated subdivision application with it. Those units that were targeted for the lower-income households would have to be distributed throughout the project, and these are the provisions of the ordinance you're considering. They have to be constructed at the same time as the market rate units. They have to look and feel and have all the similar features to those market rate units. And there are covenants that needed to be, that would need to be recorded, preserving the affordability of those units for the time period indicated on the slide here. There is also a requirement that the application include something called a housing plan that would describe how many units and and which ones were targeted for the lower-income level, how large they are, whether they be rental or ownership, where they, where the the affordable units are located within the site to clearly show that they're distributed. And you'd have to identify what those affordability levels are and what the production schedule is for all of the units in the development. There would need to be a restriction agreement recorded against the 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 property. And this housing plan and agreement form would be required to be submitted with the application. The Planning Commission considered the ordinance back in, on January 3rd of this year and voted to forward a recommendation for approval of the ordinance to the city council. And so this evening, staff is asking that the city council determine this project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and that the council adopt Council Bill 022401 to amend Title 27 of the Loma Linda Municipal Code. With that, I will stop sharing the presentation and Lorena and I will be available for questions.
Okay. I'm sorry. I mean, you you sped through the requirements and the criteria very effectively. For people that are watching online or whatever, what's the take-home on this? Because you went through a lot of stuff very quickly. It all made sense until the end, and I wasn't sure where we were at. So for the average citizen that's looking at issues related to affordable housing, what's the take-home?
The take-home is, is that if a developer comes in with a development project proposed on a identified properties in the housing element and proposes that at least 20% of the units in that application be reserved as affordable units, that that project would have to be approved as a matter of right, not subject to public hearing. It would be approved at the staff level, but that it would be required to meet all development standards and all design standards that are in the Development Code. So it essentially removes the discretion on the part of the city to deny a project or make modifications to a project that proposes that level of affordable housing and meets all, all development requirements in the code. Is that a, does that recap everything adequately for the public, do you feel?
I believe so. He stopped asking questions. But I have a question. If we pass an inclusionary ordinance that requires 20% affordable housing, how would that, that would be essentially requiring us to stand down from any discretion?
That's a little bit different because this particular provision of the law only applies to those sites, and I apologize for the the maze that this is, but it only applies to those sites that were used as housing element sites in the last two housing elements. So it's only a subset of sites within Loma Linda that would be subject to this particular ordinance.
Mr. Gendal?
Can I see the map again?
Yes, just a moment, please. I'll I'll leave the presentation up just so that we can make a little bit easier here. Just a moment, please. Lorena, I think I still have share screen capability, so just a minute. Sorry, all, this is more complicated than it should be.
Lynette, do you have access to make or host? Or to share the presentation?
I'm just looking for the right screen. Lorena, I've got
There you go. There it is.
It's up? Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Few different questions. I'm going to begin with the questions about the map. So by the city of Colton, we have the green area, which is Hillside Conservation. What does that mean in regards to this?
I would need to look at the list that is in Appendix B. But if those sites adjacent to Colton were identified in the prior housing element eight years ago and 16 years ago, those would be subject to this ordinance. Unless, and I, this was a qualifying measure of the bill, unless there is a subdivision proposed, then anything that is looking for a subdivision of land to build single-family residences would not be subject to the ordinance.
So in Appendix B, for example, I see HR-C, which is what the Hillside Conservation represents. Richard Canyon Road and Adams Avenue vacant. What does that mean?
That's indicating that it's a vacant site and it is zoned HRC. So Hillside Residential Conservation.
So if someone comes in and says, hey, I'm going to allocate 20% for affordable housing, can I build on that?
If they were, it depends on what the the application was. If it, if it were for a subdivision of of land, if they wanted to build a little subdivision, they would not be subject to it. They would have to go through a discretionary process. If they wanted to build one unit on one lot, Lorena, can you help me out here? Does your, for a single-family home, is that by right now?
Yes, that that is by right. We do zoning administrative review and we do notify the neighbors. But it is a by right permit.
So my question's not answered. Let me give an example. That area has been under a lot of attention over the past few years. Proposed development in that area. If I'm a builder, I come in and say, hey, I'm going to build 500 houses. I will have 150 of them be low-income. Do I automatically get to build that as long as it meets our other codes in that area?
No, because they would have to do a subdivision in order to to build 500 units.
All maps are discretionary, would have to go before Planning Commission and City Council.
All what? Sorry?
Maps, subdivisions.
What's a subdivision?
When they break up the lot. So there's that one giant lot, that green lot that you see on the screen. Should you come before us with 500 new lots, that would have to be, go under discretionary review and be reviewed by council.
So what are we saying can skip the city council and we would have to approve automatically if 20% is allocated?
I think where we get into the weeds on some of this is that none of this stuff is any city project, right? You still have to have the property owner and the developer want to actually do something with it. And potentially, what it allows them to do is skip some of our process if they provide those those prerequisites, right? Is that
That's correct.
summarize? So but the reality is, is probably not much of this is ever going to change because it's not economically feasible for a developer to do that. And just to rewind a little bit, and I don't know if you could, if you have these numbers, but the amount of cities that have actually got their housing element approved is very, very low, right? If if any.
A few months ago, I believe we were at 26 or 28. I'm not sure where we're at today.
28 cities out of all the cities in California? Or 28%?
The SoCal region within SBCTA region.
Well, that's bigger than what I thought. So this has been a struggle, right, to get these approved and has not been an easy task. To get these approved and has not been an easy task. So is this something that pretty much all the cities are agreeing to, to get their housing element through?
They have to, essentially because there is the requirement in state law that this has to be done. If you want a certified housing element, you need to comply with this provision of the state law. In the past, the state department of housing and community development has allowed you to promise to do it later. But they are saying now that if you do not have this provision in your code, they would not find your element compliant with state law.
So I guess it's essentially mandatory, but I'd still like to know what we're approving. So in the off chance, we do have a developer, a landowner that, you know, is okay with developing. What are we saying that they have to do in order to bypass? Some of our processes that we have right now?
Let me back up just a little bit and, and state that you might recall about a year and a half ago. The city approved something called objective design standards. And this built upon the standards in the code that regulate things like height and setbacks and parking. And start and addressed open space requirements in greater detail and the actual design. Architectural design of our project. And said, and, and again, this was to comply with state law, so that if you meet all of these objective design standards. The project is subject to. By right approval or ministerial review, not requiring the planning commission and city council. So there, there's actually a newer law that somewhat makes obsolete. The law that we're asking you to adopt tonight. I, I, again, this is a twisted knot of, of laws, but the city currently has in place. Regulations that allow for a ministerial process of housing applications that are compliant. With these objective design standards in the code. What this new law, what, I'm sorry, what the ordinance before you was saying this evening. It's, you know, even notwithstanding this other law that's in place. If anybody comes in with an application with at least 20% of the units. As affordable housing. That can meet all of the criteria in the ordinance. It would be subject to by right approval. And, and the city, the community development department would certainly be required to review it to ensure that it meets all of the requirements in the code. And it could be rejected by city staff if, if city staff finds that the project is not compliant. So it puts a pretty high bar on a project being subject to this by right approval.
And I'd like to add, if it's not compliant with the objective design standards that we already have in place. Then it's no longer ministerial and it becomes discretionary and then we bring it before this council.
Last question on that. So in one of the areas on the map that were identified, again, say the landowner and there's a developer willing to build something on there. They want to build a high rise, five stories high. They meet everything we say in here. Are they able to go through the ministerial route and have everything approved?
Not if the zoning standard, if the zoning standards do not allow a five story building, they cannot build a five story building. If the zoning standards say the building cannot exceed 35 feet in height, they are limited to that 35 feet in height.
Got it.
It, it doesn't give anybody carte blanche. They have to play by the rules.
Okay, I know I said that was the last question, but follow up on that question. Say that there, there's not a height requirement, or let's say someone comes in, proposes a three story building. There is currently nothing in our code that says that needs an elevator. And someone comes in with a proposal, they don't have an elevator, that would automatically be approved as long as everything was within code?
That's actually a building code issue, and if they are not required by the building code. To provide an elevator, they're, they don't have to provide an elevator. So that it's a building code issue separate from the zoning code.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
And then just one final wrap up. Lorena, maybe you can tie this up for us. What, what's the reason why we want our housing element approved? Because this has been dragging out now for a while.
It's state law and the attorney general's office reaches out to us regularly to ask for an update where we're at with our housing element, but it's state law.
Did you answer what percentage of the housing elements are currently approved? Was that the 26, 28% or 26 to 28?
It was just the number of cities within the.
SCAG, right?
Yes, within the SCAG region.
And how many are there total?
At this time, I'm not sure, but about two or three months ago, it was about between 26 to 28.
I mean, how many total cities are there that we're talking about? What's the denominator?
One hundred and ninety four, right, for SCAG?
That's right.
It was the same number as the United Nations.
So that's, that's less than 15%.
I, I just know we've been struggling with this for years and many of the other cities have been. And their elements have been rejected on multiple levels or being scrutinized on multiple levels, correct? Whereas this, of course, there's no guarantee that this will be the final hurdle, but. I had, I was under the impression we were a lot closer than some places were.
I, I would concur. They sent us a letter that said if the city does this one last thing, they would find the element in, in, full compliance with state law. And absolutely, there are cities that are, even cities in the San Diego region, which was supposed to have their housing elements approved about four or five years ago. There are many cities in the San Diego region that are still struggling to get their elements certified. The state has just been much more stringent than they have in the past.
Yeah, and I, I'm not, not intending to put anybody on out there, but I believe like Colton, Redlands and other cities are struggling with this. No, I don't think anybody in our region has had theirs approved yet, but I don't know if that's true.
I, I don't know off the, the top of my head. I just know that there are still many cities in the SCAG region that are. Actually, there are one or two cities that have been sued for just not moving forward quickly enough.
Right, because that's the next point, right? That's why we say the attorney general keeps calling us because at some point, well, again, when there's a thousand cities in front of us, maybe we aren't the biggest target, but. That's what that ultimately ends up in, right? So.
There, there's a chance that the, the state could file a lawsuit or other action.
All right. If there are no other comments here on the dais, we'll. Sorry, go ahead.
My question is with regard to the makeup of the lower, low and very low income units in the 20%. Can they just come in and let's say we're at a low point in the housing price? And lower income is market rate. Can they just take credit for this and steamroll the city?
Lowering, it, it's all tied to what the average, or I'm sorry, the median household income is in the county. And what they would be able to afford. So if, for example, if the market plunged significantly and, and, you know, the price of the house went down to $150,000. And it was affordable to lower income households, then indeed they could make that claim.
And can, we have a certain number of lower and a certain number of very low and a certain number of low. So can the first person to come along with a project just soak up all the low? Lower, but not the low or the very low? Or do they have to do a pro rata share of, of those different categories?
Each, each project stands on its own. And so if somebody were to come in with a proposal for 100 units with at least 20% of those for low, in the lower income category, they would qualify. If the next project comes in and proposed with 50 units and proposes 20% of those for lower income, they would qualify. So it's on a project by project basis, not tied to the targets for the housing element.
Well, my question though, is that our targets only have so many lower. And then there's very low and low. So can they get by with the lowest? I hate the word low, it's getting mixed up. But can they get by doing the less expensive version? Soak up all of those in our requirements and leave the very low dangling with forcing one developer at the end to do all of that?
It's, I apologize, it's more complicated than that, but yes, somebody could come in. And propose something within the low income category. And it, it's. The city can't really require somebody to build very low. Income housing. I'm, I'm trying to think of an easier way to explain it. Because you've got this universe of units that are in the housing element, the 2051 units. Of which 853, I think the chart showed are for those lower income categories. That's a citywide target that, that the city needs to report on progress every year. But that's not tied at all to this ordinance. This ordinance kind of stands on its own. The, the ordinance would allow the city to work towards those targets. So I, yeah, I can kind of see where your question's going here, indeed, that, you know. But it, it's not putting a burden on the next property owner to, if somebody builds low income units. The, the next person after them could do low income, the next person after them could do low income. It's just that the city overall would not be working towards those very low income units.
Could we make up for that lack of ability to force them to do very low by putting that kind of a provision in our inclusionary ordinance?
You, you could, you could have something in the inclusionary ordinance that does require. Distribution across the various income groups.
Thank you.
Okay, let's open the public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Sandra? Nope. No? Okay. Close the public comment and decide what we're going to do with this.
Would you be a motion to waive the first reading?
Mm-hmm, on the screen.
A motion to waive the first reading and set second reading for council bill O dash twenty twenty four dash oh one.
We have a motion on the table? Second by Dr. Lenard.
Motion is to introduce on first reading, waive the reading in its entirety and set the second reading to March 12th, 2024 for council bill O dash twenty twenty four zero one. An ordinance approving, an ordinance approving development code amendment P twenty three dash twenty twenty two, which amends title seventeen zoning of the Loma Linda municipal code. By adding chapter 120 pertaining to streamlined housing development projects on housing element sites. To identify applicable sites, establish requirements and standards for lower income target units. And establish procedures and requirements for the ministerial review and approval of housing development projects with lower income target units. Please vote.
As we vote, I'll make a comment. I imagine it's very naive of me to believe that this is the last time the state will force us to do anything.
Motion carry unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to two E's, which is a joint meeting of the city council and our housing authority going over our mid-year budget.
Good evening. Okay, I will do this one. I have invited the, the members of the, the union representative. And also the member of the mid-year, I mean, of the budget committees to be here with us tonight to go over the. Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four mid-year budget review. The detailed line by line items of the, the budget is in your folders, but I would like to go over the summary. The PowerPoint, where is it? Okay, I want to, like to start off with, how did we end the last fiscal year? So last fiscal year, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, our revenue was at about $23.5 million. Our expenditure is close to 25 millions. So we have a deficit of $1.37 million. But in addition to our routine revenue, we have extra revenue transferred into the gas tax. The COVID-19 federal stimlet money of the 2.9 million, transfer route of 120,000. And other sources of 51,000. So at the end of the year, we did have a surplus of $2.3 million, million dollars. But if we take out the, the COVID-19 money of 2.9. Last year, we actually have a deficit of about $611 million. Huh? Oh, six thousand, not million. Six hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So how are we doing this year? So we're looking at the changes in, in general fund revenues. So the property tax is increased by 311,000. Franchise tax is 178. The sale tax is increased by 247,000. And the TOT is decreased by 52,700. Other taxes, 6,000. License and permit is negative 241,000, and this is because we were hoping that the housing. And construction will come in a lot quicker, but they did not come in. The, the fine is about negative 2,800. The use of money wishes, the interest on our saving is increased by 272,000. The intergovernment is by 11,000 increase and chain charge of services is increased by 205,000. And this is from the, the trash that, that we, we have increased in trash bill for. I forget the word. Organic waste, okay? And then the big item is overhead for maintenance and operation increased by 125,000. And overhead of capital fund increased by 432,000. This project, I mean, this year we have the, the water tank that costs about $7 million. We have the water line that go at the end of Beaumont, go underneath the railroad track and, and over the flood control channel. It's about a million dollars. When we have a capital project that funded by enterprise fund, we charge ourselves 19.5 million dollars. A wish is told about one point. About 1.5 million dollars. So, so that is a one-time revenue to general fund. So at the end, our total fund is, is expected to increase by about 1.4. Million, 734,000 dollars. Maybe so far?
What's the reason for the lower TOT?
It's just, I guess they, they ran out less hotel. So it's, that might come in lower. Do you have any, any reason?
When initially, when I did the projections, it was based on the historical amounts. And then when I redid them now at mid-year, it was based on what has actually been coming in for the first two quarters. And they, they are coming a little bit lower.
So hopefully by next year, after Harrell finished the, the hotel number four, we have more, more TOT. But, but at the same time, we did give him some. But, but at the same time, we did give him some incentive, so we had to give back. Now, as far as increased changes in the expenditures, we have a decrease in administration by fifty-seven thousand. Community development increased by seventy-one thousand. This is due to the attorney fee that we have increased expenditures. Police services increased by eighty-nine hundred. Fire services increased by nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. A lot of it had to do with overtime. We have a couple of firemen that got ill this past, the first half of the year. So have to fill that with, with overtime. And we also, earlier this year, we have a vacancy, and we just finally filled it this week. So we filled that position. Public works increased expenditure of two hundred and forty-three thousand. And again, this is for the trash, refu, for household, organic waste, yes. So increase of expenditures by about one point two, one point two million dollars. So, looking at how we're doing, the, the revenue is about twenty-six point eight million dollars. Expenditure is twenty-seven point three million. So this year, we are looking at the deficit of four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I want to point out that at the end of the year, more likely, I probably not gonna have this much deficit, for one, for a couple of reasons. I am not going to fill three positions that we have budget for, for this fiscal year. One of them is emergency medical service coordinator, EMS coordinator. I'm not gonna fill the accountant, accountant position. I'm not gonna fill the assistant public work director, city engineer, is someone that I was hoping to be able to train to replace me. So, but it still look like we're gonna be in deficit, okay? The reason I want to show what happened last fiscal year without one-time money, and, and this year with one-time money for the, the overhead, I want to point out that the number is going in the opposite direction. So we have to make some tough decision next fiscal year on how we're gonna do this. Is it decrease in services or increase of revenue? So I will bring back to the City Council in the next couple of months to make some tough decision. With regard to, to decrease in, the reason I show this graph is about twenty-three, thirty-three percent of our expenditures is for fire department. And, and this is, safety is for parking patrol, court enforcement. The police services is about twenty-six percent. Public works is sixteen percent. Refuse is about seven percent. Admin, two point eight, I mean, eleven percent. And CD is about three percent. And so I have to look into, we have to cut somewhere. And so I can't cut anymore body because we are pretty much bare bone minimum. So if not, we have to increase the revenue. How are we gonna do that? Well, we've been trying very hard to bring in more sale taxes, more TOT taxes. But another thing we have to look at is, have to increase some sale tax, TOT tax, and, and utility tax, which I have to get direction from the City Council to see if you want me to look into it, and then we have to go to the voters to see if they're willing to vote for, for more taxes. This will be for other meetings. I will have a budget workshop with all the City Council and the budget committees. And so soon after we completed this meeting tonight, I will ask the finance director to work on starting the process for budget for next fiscal year tomorrow. So this is concluded of general fund. Other revenue, which is enterprise fund, we're doing very good. We have some changes, charging services, an increase of four and thirty-six thousand. So total increase for sewer fund of four and eighty-three thousand. Loma Linda Connected Community, or increased by four thousand seven hundred. Water fund increased by a hundred and seventeen thousand, I mean, a hundred and fourteen thousand, and, and small other funds. So other expenditure changes, total a hundred and seventy-one thousand. And you see that we have a special revenue fund, special district fund, capital fund, a hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred. So total expenditure changes of one point three million dollars. And again, and this, this is for, there's something wrong. Oh, because of the water fund, okay. Include the general fund. So this is special enterprise fund plus general fund. This is the total of enterprise fund. The revenue is about five point one. The expenditure, expenditure is close to nine million. And again, this is okay because we use the developing the PAC fee to build a water tank. It's, it's a one-time expenditures for the water tank and, and for the pipeline to go across at the, at the end of Beaumont to cross the railroad track and the channel. Summarize, summary of all the changes, which is right here. I'm sorry I go pretty fast, but I, I just want to point it out. Right now, I think we're doing okay. We might have to dip into reserve from the, the surplus that we, we have last fiscal year. But I think we need to look for what we need to do for the next few years. So staff recommend that we, the City Council approve the staff recommendation for changes in the, in the revenue and expenditures for the remainder of this fiscal year. We have to.
You mentioned a workshop. I don't know what the soonest is we could start doing that. Because I would really like to, I'd like to hear some things on where we kind of stand with where, what we're doing to be proactive for business and looking for revenue.
Yes.
I think we've all heard some anecdotal, you know, rumors here and there. For example, one was that there was a potential restaurant chain that wanted to come in, that their only model is, is drive-through. And because we have the drive-through ban, they were not able to come here, so they went to Redlands. And so, and it could be argued that some of those things are minimal, but every little penny adds up. So if we're missing out on some opportunities because we have some of these things in place, I would like a comprehensive report on what we need to adjust, and if we need to change some of our drive-through policies, or we need to look at potential public safety taxes, things like whatever we gotta do to get ahead of it. And I'm not advocating right now, just going straight to those things, but I'd like some information on what they look like.
Yes, we had a, I had a meeting with the, the budget committee carriers here tonight, and we did, we did talk about that. So we plan to have some brainstorming event with the, the department head, city staff, to come over the way to generate more revenue for the city.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Questions and some comments. Oh, I'll go down my list, I was gonna follow up on yours. But starting on number one, gas tax, that is gas stations filling up gas and, how come that's not part of normal revenue?
Pardon me?
Go back to your first slide.
This one?
Yeah.
Yes.
The one before.
This one?
One, one before.
This last year.
Okay. The gas tag and COP, so I guess my question is, why, why are those separate?
Okay, gas tag, okay, explain.
So the gas taxes, they have sent sales tax that's collected by the state, and it gets recorded in a separate special revenue fund. And that money is transferred to the general fund because the expenditures for streets is, is captured in the general fund.
Explain the COP grant.
And then the COP's grant, same thing, it's a special revenue fund, so it has to be recorded in its own fund. And that, the money that gets transferred to the general fund is to cover the sheriff's service specialist position.
Second question, which we already kind of touched upon, why is TOT down? I understand that we're using actuals, but do we know what the root cause of why we didn't collect as much? Like, why is there less?
It's just based on whatever the hotels are reporting. And the projections that I had for the new hotel, perhaps were, were a little bit high. But based on the numbers that are coming in, they're not coming in as high as we anticipated. And the, the smaller, I noticed a drop in the smaller, the motel. The motels have dropped a little bit compared to what they were before. So I don't know if they're.
Got it, so we don't know like why that drop is?
No, it's just based on what each hotel submits for their TOT.
Okay.
And we, we don't even know that it's a drop, it's just less than we projected.
Correct.
Right, it's just less than we projected.
So this may be much more than last year, but it's not as much more as we thought.
Right.
I think some of our projections may have been high because if you look back the last couple of years, during COVID, things like that, you had the state paying for rooms for homeless, all kinds of other things that artificially inflated that market. And so we're not even sure what that market looks like. I think we were banking on the fact that most of the residents or guests were folks here for hospital services. That's what Mr. Patel was hoping for, I'm still hoping for, but I don't know.
And then to follow the comment that the mayor made, do you know what the TOT taxes were present off the top of your head?
It's ten percent.
Ten percent, so we would need five million dollars to cover our deficit essentially? Our deficit's five hundred thousand, right? So we need five million?
That's a lot of hotels, yes.
Yeah. Just, just wanted to get an idea of like what, how much increase in revenue from businesses we would need to cover it from just sales tax and TOT taxes?
And we're not gonna do it with restaurants either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because a super successful fast food restaurant would do five million dollars a year. And we get one percent of those. So that would be only fifty thousand.
Yeah.
And, and the num, the reason the, the sale tax increased by two and forty-seven thousand, the actual number is, is actually, the sale tax actually lower from what we estimate by, by two hundred and forty thousand. The reason for that was we, we lost the annexure. But we did budget some money to reimburse them, or, or a lot of incentive for them to be here. But since they went out of business, we didn't have to pay that incentive. So that's why it, it show a positive sale tax.
So we want to attract a lot of business, but we would essentially need somewhere between a five to fifty million dollar increase in revenue from these businesses to cover our deficits. Do you mind going two slides down? Or go, go to the previous, slide four? No, slide four. Four. The one before. Right there. All right, so the biggest increase we had from projected is fire services, and you mentioned it was because we had some people out. Are those individuals back? Do we have all of our bases covered?
Chief?
Yeah, like Jarb said, we just filled our last vacancy, but I believe we have two on long-term injury currently. So one of them shouldn't be too much longer, but the other one's kind of, we're waiting on some more projections on when he might be back, so we're still running short.
So from the projections we had before the beginning of the year, we still expect that number to change throughout the year? To increase more because of that one person being out?
Yes. Or, or you think this is the, the estimate for the end of the year?
Yeah, this includes projecting.
Projecting, yes.
Fiscal year, yes, that's correct. So right now, if we captured now, it wouldn't be that much. But what we always do at mid-year is project what we think is gonna happen by the end of the fiscal year. And so projecting probably one of the vacancies will, long-term injuries will probably go through the end of the year. Other one is, I think, a little shorter, I'm sorry. So, yeah, this is our, so it could be less, could be more, honestly, depending on what happens over the next few months. But as long as we keep everybody currently healthy and safe and keep working, then we should, we should be around there.
I hope everyone stays healthy and safe, too. That was all my questions, just last comment. So I mentioned we would need an increase of five to fifty million dollars to cover our deficit, but I think our deficit's actually higher than what we're reporting. And the only reason our deficit is lower, because as you mentioned, we're not filling some positions in. Talking with a lot of our staff, I keep getting that sentiment that we're, that our staffing is low, and like you mentioned, it's bare bones. So if it wasn't for us moving, basically delaying the inevitable because we need individuals in our departments, our current projected deficit is a rosier picture than the truth.
I'm, I'm just, I'm trying.
No, I, just to, just to follow up, I think the sooner we can start some workshops and start talking about, I'd like to see some ideas, what, what staff thinks, you know? And I know I'm only one vote, but I also, I know that other cities have had to look at things like public safety, utility taxes, things like that. And, you know, I, absolutely, we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna address this stuff down the road. So, you know, I, 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 I accept the responsibility and blame here because I think all of us could be equally trying to not just rely on staff to do this, to be out there trying to figure out how we can attract the right business and the right people here. But, I mean, that's also the sign of the times of where we're headed to. I just want to make sure that we're gonna be able to protect our community. And I, I don't see the cost going down at all, they're gonna go up. So whatever, whatever you can present to us, not, not as any final ideas, but just things we can be tossing around to look at, I think the sooner we start looking at them, the better. That's just my position.
So I need your vote on the staff recommendations.
Well, we obviously have to move this forward, not much we can do right now, but hopefully things improve.
Where are we at on the agenda in terms of, are we voting to approve a budget or?
The mid-year budget, yeah.
It's item two E.
Just voting to approve the mid-year budget report.
So basically, you're accepting the decrease in revenue and the increased appropriation?
It's an acknowledgement, yes.
So when is the most appropriate point where we can raise questions about the budget and priorities? Now or later?
You can do it anytime, but, but we plan to have a, the budget workshop, so we can, you can do that at that time. But in the meantime, before that, you can start sending me the email or question so I can look into it. Yes.
May I add that for now, the workshop is scheduled for April tenth, and that's tentative based on whether you can attend.
Well, what's happening on the tenth, that's a budget workshop?
It's a joint workshop.
To deal with the details that we're trying to address now, but not really prepared for it.
To go over the proposed budget. So by that point, we should have the proposed budget, and it'll be a workshop with the Budget Committee as well as council and the public.
And is that an open forum where we can talk about ideas and?
Yes. Yes.
Bring things forward without having to be.
I've got multiple questions, I'm not sure now's the appropriate time because I haven't done my homework. But if April tenth is when we're gonna do this, then I'll be ready.
Yeah, we used to have that, have that, have that.
And the Budget Committee will be ready for me, right? Okay.
He could probably give you his opinion after, after class anyway. All right, do I have a motion to move this? Just accepting the mid-year budget report.
Which is, which is in the booklet.
All right, I'll move it. I move to approve the net decreased revenues of five hundred and fifty thou, three thousand two hundred, and net increase to appropriations of one million, three hundred and eight thousand and seven hundred dollars.
May I add that on the staff report, the financial impact has the full motion, recommendation. On the staff report, the financial impact, which is I believe page two, I meant, is the full recommendation that is being requested.
Say that again.
On the staff report, the financial impact, which is I believe on page two, is the full recommendation.
So a net increase in general fund revenues of 1.473 and a net increase in expenditures of 1.181 million?
So what we're doing is accepting the midterm staff report and questions and issues can come up in April.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
For next year's budget.
Yeah, 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 right.
First and a second?
Motion is to approve a net increase of 1,473,400 in general fund revenues and a net increase of 1,181,600 in general fund expenditures. And in the city overall, approve a net decrease of 553,200 in revenues and a net increase of 1,308,700 in expenditures as presented in attachments two and three of the staff report.
This is all going to come up again in April?
Motion carried unanimously.
And if you have a good idea, please let me know as soon as you can, so I'm going to start working on it, yes.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, I know we had one item pulled, which was?
3F.
3F.
Can I go over that now?
Yes.
Okay, so this is to authorize the purchase of two fuel management system. One will be at the fire station number one, which is right here at the city hall, another one will be at the city yard. Our municipal code required that any purchased equipment or supply exceed 25,000 should be done by open bid, which is you have to prepare, plan, specification, go out to bid. But in this case, it's kind of a specialty item, it's equipment that is going to exceed 25,000, so it's a total 32,000 for the two pumps. So staff recommend that the city council waive, waive that requirement and award a contract to purchase the fuel management system for the two pumps, one at the city yard and one at the fire station.
What are the reasons you like this particular company? Did we do business with them before?
Yeah, Nate, Nate, help us with the, find these contractors.
So I went and looked at our current system and what we're doing and found a solution to some of the issues and pitfalls. And out of all the vendors, one was cost, two, I mean, we're talking in excess of 100,000 for anything competitive. Two was the ability to customize it specific to our needs because most of our needs are pretty basic. We just need to update our technology and our, the ability to communicate with finance and reconcile our usage versus our costs. And their ability to get us online without requiring a lot of outside assistance from additional vendors, like for instance, our network for security issues and other things. They checked all the boxes and collectively, we can do both systems because initially it was just, we're researching just for the fire department, we're going to move forward. We're able to do both sites for less than, I would say, 25% of what the competitors would be, so.
Both sites?
Both sites meaning corp yard as well as the fire station fuel locations. So we have two locations within the city where we house fuel tanks, those would be the two sites, yeah.
All right, any questions or anybody wanting to move the entire consent calendar?
Move it.
Second, but I got a question on 3E.
Okay, and a second, but a question on which one?
3E.
On E.
This, this isn't the small ones we were talking about a month ago or two months ago?
No, this is street light pole.
Okay, cool, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I think we have a first and a second on that one.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar as submitted, please vote.
Thanks Nate for doing that.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, moving on to new business. Is this just mine to present it?
Pardon me?
Mine to present?
Yes, but I have the pictures. Lynette, can you bring up the pictures, please?
So I guess it's been a little bit, I didn't realize it's been eight years or so. If you look over to the right.
So this is mountain view. This is flood control channel, and this is the bridge in question.
Okay, so down over to the right, go all the way to the right, down, down, right there. So that is the, the bridge into Mission Trails. And the HOA approached us, actually approached me several years ago, and again, I didn't realize it was so long ago, but in 2015, this came in front of us.
I'm sorry.
See that? Okay, this is, this is the bottom road is down here. We have Mayberry that come down from bottom road to the, to the park. Okay, and we have a bridge to cross.
So initially, these bridges were put in as part of what we were proposing as our trail system here in the city. And so the idea was to connect various areas around town. And what ended up happening is the HOA was, where I live, my HOA, was increasingly upset because of break-ins and other things that were happening. Transients living in the wash were using that bridge to come in and access the property.
That's up in the right.
That's on the right. So it was brought in front of the, I thought this would be an administrative decision, and I totally forgot that it came in front of the council to talk about it in 2015. And we voted to allow that, that bridge to be closed and locked. Since then, that has. The lower one on the right, yes.
That's closed?
That is closed, so it's got, it's locked up, so city can access it, obviously, public safety can access it and whatever, but it's locked to free pedestrian access. So the HOA there is very happy, they're, they believe that's cut down on a whole bunch of issues for them. However, now you have the other development, the separate development there to the west, they are now reaching out and complaining about the same type of issues. So apparently there have been some, and I have not confirmed this with the sheriff's department, but apparently there have been some burglaries and some other issues where the anecdotal evidence is that people are potentially using that, that bridge now to access that other community, whether it's transients, people that are, you know, then going over to the storage place or getting onto the railroad tracks or all that other stuff that's going on. So they have now asked that that bridge be closed as well.
Close.
In a similar fashion. Yeah, so we would lock it up, so city would have access again.
That's, that's what we were doing when we closed the Beaumont Bridge, is to move these bridges to handle this, right?
No, I'm sorry, what do you mean?
Okay, so we used to have Beaumont, there were two bridges over the wash, and I thought those two bridges were what we're describing here.
Correct, it used to be the, the bridge that served for car. So we saved them before the county was going to throw them away, so we saved them for pedestrian bridge.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct.
But these are just pedestrian bridges, there's no vehicle access. The, the challenge is that both of these HOA communities are, really believe that they impact them in a negative way. And I've received multiple emails from, from people in this. That they believe transients and criminals are accessing their community via the bridge. Over these bridges.
Couldn't they just walk around if we closed them?
No, because you got to go across the wash.
I take mountain view, go around Mission Boulevard, couldn't I just enter there?
You could, but it's not, there's no incentive to do that. When you, if you're camping in the wash, you're homeless or you're a criminal, you can use that as a quick escape in and out. There's no point in driving all the way around, if that makes sense.
Is there a way to make washes safer? And the reason I'm asking is because there's something similar that people on Ohio Street said, there's a bridge connecting over there as well. I think the transient issue is the one that scares residents there. The reason this is coming up now is because there have been emails sent to the mayor or council members. I'm assuming in time, we're going to keep moving west and eventually the Ohio Street Bridge is going to become an issue. So the question is like, do we close all the bridges?
Well, Ohio is a road bridge.
No, it's pedestrian.
Which one are you talking about there?
At, at, in Ohio, we do have a pedestrian bridge too.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Whether it's anecdotal or not, I can tell you, people, people believe that it is leading to problems and issues. And we do know that there are a lot of transients that camp along that wash area, so whether or not they're using that to enter those, those HOAs and do bad things, I don't know. It's kind of, Casey, do you want to weigh in on any of that? All I, all I know is I've gotten several emails and I thought it would be more of an administrative thing, and I asked the city manager if he would lock that bridge in addition to the other one that's been locked. And he reminded me that this had to go to a council for a decision.
Lock it permanently or just for certain hours?
No, permanently.
Well, then why would we put the bridge there?
Well, maybe it was a failed experiment, I don't know what to tell you.
I haven't looked up any of this, but I can and get that information to you, but I definitely think, like Mayor Duper said, removing any additional access points that criminals or transients could use, I think that would assist us with our job.
Okay, so if I understand, the two bridges that we moved from Beaumont to this place, the net effect is that we have vagrants that are, are invading the properties and creating havoc. Is that the issue? So we're talking about shutting down two bridges that we, we invested to have moved from Beaumont to here, and now we're saying it ain't working.
If I'm a resident in that property and I want to use that bridge because I, I cycle every morning, am I able to get a key?
No.
No. But the same exists with the other, the other bridge is fully locked down, it's been locked down for eight years now.
Wait, 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 what's been locked down for eight years?
The other bridge.
This one? I don't know.
This one?
That one, that's been down, that's been locked down for eight years?
By our council decision, eight years ago, we locked it down.
Oh, wow.
So now this, the other community to the west is asking for the same thing.
And it's because they have vagrants that are moving in and putting up their tents and so?
Yeah, so it's, it's a little bit different than the other one, so.
Let me, let me borrow you a clip.
So this one, this one actually got a little more personal because the people living right here in these two houses were constantly having to deal with people coming through basically alongside their properties, leaving trash. All kinds of issues going in here, but the thought process, they believed that these people were causing break-ins and other things in the neighborhoods. Since we closed that, we haven't heard any complaints. I'm not saying it fixed it, I'm just saying, these people are happy. This one's a little different because it doesn't, I don't believe there's any parcels directly right here, but they can get, what, what street is this?
Ragsdale.
Ragsdale. So they had a break-in last week on Ragsdale and, or a couple of weeks ago, and the theory was they ended up chasing some guy or they thought was the guy lived down over here somewhere and had used this to access the street to get up there. But their other main complaint is that all the transients that are living along the wash underneath the bridge are also using it to get into the community. And then they get over here into like their pool area, tennis courts and all that. So they've asked that they be treated the same, and we closed this bridge like we did this one down here.
So what's the point of the bridges then?
A failed experiment, I guess.
From my recollection, the bridges were put in to extend the trails, connect the trail system.
Yes, this is Edison, this is Edison Eastman Trail right here, it's Edison right here. So to connect the trail, yeah.
So I, I mean, I imagine we could, what we did last time is we actually had speakers come from the HOA, and I have not reached back out to that, I'm not sure if we want to go through that because I would imagine we'll probably have 10, 15 people would be willing to show up, but it would probably be about the same as what we had at the other I guess we weigh the value.
So I mean, we went through a whole discussion before we moved those bridges from Beaumont over here, and what you're saying is that it's a failed experiment.
If you talk to the people that live there, they would tell you that. Now, if you look at it from the balcony view, I don't know, I don't know how much those are used by, by people exercising or enjoying the trails, I have no idea how, how much they're used for legitimate purposes.
Help, help me know where the, the Loma Credit Union is on this, because I'm, I'm.
Down over there somewhere.
Oh, wow, okay. Because I see people down using that park a lot.
Yes, that, that park, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
But see, they have their own park over here, so they don't, they don't need to walk across the bridge to use this park, they have their own facility up there.
They still use it, because I see them.
Yeah, but people from that community don't walk over to that other park. So it's, it's up to you guys, I.
So what are the downsides? I mean, we've put those there for a reason, and it's evidently not working, so what's the downside? Who's going to be here in two months?
The downside is somebody that bikes or runs or jogs that uses that is probably not going to be happy, but they could go down Mountain View or California.
Again, if you say to close it tonight, I will have, have you buy, go out and buy some chain length and to close it off, and with the chain length fence, with the, with the chain around it. And if two, three months later, we have more people complain about opening it back up, they can come back to you and you say, okay, Jarb, open it back up, I just reboot the chain, so.
I, I think we'll get into a, a back and forth because I, I know from some of the emails, I've got, I think, plenty of the homeowners there would be happy to attend and give their, their piece of it too, so. It may be a no win, or we may not hear anything, maybe it's not even used. I, I don't know.
Well, it's definitely, because I've been there, and I know there's bikers and people that walk across. The thing with the mountain view is, like, that's car traffic and it's, it's not personal, it's not quiet as it is going through those bridges. I'm wondering if there's like a compromise we can reach, because again, the whole point was to connect the park to the north, to the park to the south, can we just block access to the homes?
I don't know how you would do that.
Is it leading to that cul-de-sac, is that cul-de-sac blocked off from the bridge? No.
It leads right into the cul-de-sac, yeah. Yeah, that's the problem.
And then also the bigger question that I raised earlier, if we close this one, should we close the one on Ohio too?
Well, I, I will tell you from a personal standpoint, I'm in favor of closing anything that, that the homeowners and the residents feel like affects their quality of life. I, I can appreciate, obviously, we're an active community and we love our trail system, but it becomes the question of. Um, but it becomes the question of where, you know, uh, we have to have that balance, right? And unfortunately, people don't feel safe and they wanna feel safe in their homes and, um, but I'd be happy to look at that too. If that's an issue, maybe we need to look at that one too.
Would we have data for the past two years of how many, um, issues have taken place in that neighborhood? What I'm thinking is if we can have that data and then two years from now, we compare it and see if that actually made a difference. That data would be accessible.
Do you mean crime data?
For that specific area?
Well, we have a problem because of our computer issue last April where we lost a whole bunch of data. So I could go back to last April.
I don't even know what you just said, so help me understand.
My.
No, no.
We, we had a computer.
Data.
We had a computer disruption last April.
Yeah, a cyber attack.
The cyber attack.
Okay.
And it lost four years' worth of data.
So we don't know how much of a problem this bridge is because we lost data?
That's not fair because that only accounts for people that call in things. So if, if you're a homeowner and you see, if you call in every single transient that you see or call to complain, then it would capture that. But they don't, people don't call in for half of the stuff that they see. So it, it's, it's a starting point. It's a, it's definitely a starting point, but I don't know that it answers a lot. I, I kinda go back to you.
From the community because.
Well, alright, I guess we put it out to them.
I've got some confusion.
So my thing is I wanna protect their quality of life, but then the whole thing about Loma Linda is that we have healthy, active people. And I, I feel they, they're not even gonna know that we closed it until we closed it or we're proposing to close it. And they're gonna be upset too. So it's like, it sounds like there's no compromise where we can block off a certain section. How much does it cost to transfer the bridge to a different location? Would that be like a couple hundred thousand? Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of money. Had to put in the abutment for those bridges.
It's a great idea. I like the idea when it all happens.
In, in a utopia, it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you know what I mean. I mean, it absolutely is. Problem is, we can't control the bad stuff that happens.
So basically, the proposal is that we lock this as well as the other one that's already been locked down. So there's no, there, there's no way to cross the, the.
Ragsdale. Cross the, the channel to Ragsdale, yes.
So we just lock them?
Yes.
And, and there's no access either direction?
Correct.
Wow. It's not what we talked about when we put those bridges there.
I, I, I just need direction from the council, so.
Alright, any position? You guys wanna take any spot? Uh, this, this was the agenda item, but if you want, we can.
You gotta talk into your microphone.
I can, I can reach out, back out to those HOA folks and have them send some people.
I'm just saying, I wonder if we should somehow get more info from the people that live there. If we could get them to maybe come to the next council meeting or something and make their voices known. I mean, it's hard to tell, cause if I live there, I could go either way with that. Yeah, I like the convenience of being open, but on the other hand, I don't like the problems that come with it being open. And it's like you said, it was like, oh, years ago, there were issues up at the area up, um, by the senior center and Bringsby's district up there, you know, and it was, you know, the people came here and they said, this is what we like. This is what's good for us, you know? And I'd rather kinda try to do something that's closer to what the, the people that actually live there are mostly impacted and see what they have to say about it.
Isn't there a jogging trail along that canal?
Yes, along the channel.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because I've had multiple people that have told me, that's wonderful. They love it, that they can jog along the canal and, and everything's great. And that's why I'm trying to.
Alright, we'll put it on next, next month's meeting. We'll invite the HOA to come.
Yeah.
But to his point, the only people that are gonna come are the ones that are having a problem with the bridge. You're not gonna hear from the whole community. So it's only gonna be one-sided feedback.
Well, yeah. No, I, I, I think to alert the community that we're interested in their feedback because I've got mixed feelings about it. Because I, I, I know people that jog along that or ride their bicycles along that, that canal and feel good about it. Sure.
I, I could put up a sign that say there will be this issue for next city council meeting.
Sure. Alright, let's do it.
I'd like to hear from whoever's concerned.
Alright. Okay, I think we have enough direction on that. That's good. Um, good, on that? Okay. And we'll reach out to the HOA there and see if they wanna send people. Alright, moving on to reports of council members.
Okay, this is the issue that has come before us in public comment. And I wanted to agendaize it so we could deal with it. So I'm not on the, on the surface of it, um, objecting to any volunteers who want to help guide one of our community assets. I'm in, I'm intrigued. I didn't realize we had a senior center board in the past.
We, we had it before it was constru-, before it was constructed. So we have a senior board members who came with the idea and helped, forecome up with the design of the building. And soon after it was completed, leaving I was here. Uh, uh, the senior center board helped with the programs and, and volunteered himself, volunteer. Uh, Mary Cook was, was one of them that helped a lot with that, with that facility at the beginning until they, they reached the point that everything is running fine. Uh, at one time, yes, we did have staff that, that run the facility. But I eliminated that position fourteen years ago. And now the senior center is run by volunteers, so.
I'm not sure, sure who's here that wants to testify to this, but, um, after the last, I don't know, couple of meetings, I, I did some checking and asked for a schedule of the senior center activities. And, um, Monday through Thursday, there were activities scheduled every day, every day.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, on the one hand, I'm supportive of participative governance where we have community members engaged with what we're doing. But when, um, we have multiple activities planned and I've got the schedule, I didn't bring it with me, but I have it, then I'm wondering what else are we looking for? And so I would turn that out to the community and say, where's the issue? Because, um, uh, I'll be hanging out there here pretty soon. But, uh, it, it looks like they've got a lot of activities planned already.
And yes, now that we have lunch program every day, Monday through Thursday, we have a lot more people coming. We have activity before the lunch and program and after. We also work with the county public health department. They provide the vaccination at the senior center and, and, uh, the COVID testing kit.
Yeah.
At the senior center, uh, so once a month, or what?
So I guess what I'm seeking is some input on what's the gap between, between what we're doing and what we want. Because my sense is, just from looking at the schedule, there's a lot of stuff going on up here already. So I'd invite the public to speak on that.
So based on the emails and discussions I've had, I think it's two things. One is the diversity of activities. Um, second is like. DEI, so different activities for different groups. So, um, for example, seniors, if you're handicapped in certain respects, having activities for a broader, um, broader group of individuals. So dancing, I think was one of the ones brought up, right? There's dancing, but there's not activities for other stuff. Um, I know we're adding stuff, but I think the main point of this is that people wanna say in what type of activities there are. And also the amenities that are offered, whether that's wifi, printing, whatever that may look like. They just wanna say in it. The benefit I see to this is similar to the past where we might've had this board, input was given. And then once, um, the community felt that their needs were addressed, this would be a temporary thing. Basically, a refresh to the senior center post-COVID. These are the priorities from the community. This is what they would like to see and kinda set a direction for it. I don't see any harm in it.
Well, well, the problem that I have is I don't have staff. And, and so when you have the board members say, say, Charlie, I, I want to do this, 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 this. Yeah, it sounds great, but I, 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 I need the staff to, to help me and, and volunteer. They, they just out there to help, but, but they're not out there to, to recruit people to be instructor or I, I, I don't know. I, it is, staffing is, is the issue.
So I think we can give limitations of, hey, this is, these are the resources we gotta work with. You can figure out what to do in this limitation. The staffing concern, I think I agree with you is, um, is who would staff the meeting, right?
Staff the meeting and, and to do whatever the board requests or, or what needs to be done.
I don't think any of us think that they're just gonna be given a blank check to.
Yeah.
Run over any program they want. It's, it, it obviously has to be within our budgetary limits. And, you know, you can, it can be an aspirational group that can say, you know, should funds arise, this is the order in which we'd like to impl- implement programs. But we would have, you know, control over where that budget line is. So I don't think that, that they would have no budgetary authority. So it's, it's basically an advisory group to the city council, just like all the other coun-, all the other committees.
I, I, I spent some, I, I've spent, I've had a couple of meetings with Penny Lilburne, who is the director of the senior center in Highland. And, um, testimony that we've heard in here multiple times is talks about how all the wonderful things Redland's doing and Highland's doing. I've talked with Penny and she said, just be aware, half of what we do, nobody shows up for. We schedule it and we get it all set up and nothing happens. And, and so I, I, you know, I, I wanna be sure that we are strategic in whatever it is we're doing planning for. And, and, um, when I see that, when I look at the current senior center schedule for Loma Linda Senior Center, four days a week, we've got stuff going on, including meals. And so where's the issue? What is it we're not doing? And that's what I'm not hearing.
What we're not doing is we're not offering a forum for new ideas, whether or not they're implemented.
I, I would, I mean, I'm not, maybe I am by saying this, um, inviting, um, the entire city to come down here and talk to us. But so far, we've had one advocate who's been pretty vocal and pretty strong. And, um, and he also claims he's gone around and gotten petitions signed and this and that, which is fine until we ask any of those, well, he's, he's offered them up. But my, my question is, do those people know that where we stand financially? And what kinda staffing we have here at the city? It's very easy. If I walk up to your house and knock on your door and say, hey, if you sign this position, petition, I'm gonna get you a brand new car, you know, people want everything they can get. So I, I guess I'm not, and maybe some of you have gotten, been contacted by other people outside of that one gentleman. But, um, I, I will tell you, he's a, he's a, he's a pretty strong-minded person. And, uh, I know he spends a lot of time in talking to staff. And, uh, I just wanna make sure that, you know, if, if you can go to a place like Highland that offer all kinds of things, and I know where Penny's budget comes from, it's not from the city necessarily. They have all kinds of other places they get their revenue. And, uh, same thing with Redlands, if, if these places are offering, I, you know, I don't know, it'd probably take staff to coordinate that. So it would take a penny, yeah. And she's a full-time director, that's her full-time job. That is her full-time job.
She's part-time mayor.
But, uh, it's, it's a, it, it's just a lot. And, um, I, I, you know, I, I, I just got inducted into the AARP Hall of Fame. And, and I, I was gonna, I was gonna throw the literature away until my wife said, are you kidding? There's discounts with that stuff. So, um, I, I'm, I'm feeling that we're all gonna be there at some point. And so I, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that these things aren't worth it. But it also, at what, at what level is the city here to entertain people? And that, that sounds very harsh, but we also have other things we're trying to deal with, issues. And I'll give you an example. So, um, the whole idea of providing, you know, wifi and things like that. I already, I'm already irritated that free wifi is already at the county library because that's why the transients hang out here and, and plug in with their free phones and, and congregate by the library all night long to get the wifi there. And, um, again, that sounds mean, but, uh, I just wanna make sure we're, we're being careful with what we do. And I, I, I trust that our staff is doing the right thing so far. And this is why I'm saying I should probably not say this. Um, so far, we've only heard from one indi-, I've only heard from one individual. And so I'm not ready to make a big policy decision based on that. Now, if, I think some of you all may be contacted by other people and that's, that's, that's fine. Or I haven't heard anything that's compelling me to make any changes, but I'm just one vote, so.
So we're not making a decision on this tonight. It's a report. Um, but what I'd like to say is that this wouldn't have financial impact like Dr. Riggsby said. We're saying, hey, this is what we have. Do with what you will. The benefit I see with this is, again, that empowerment aspect. If these people are bringing in more volunteers to make a city offering even better, then why not have a forum? I, I think the only expenditure is someone would have to staff that meeting.
Well, it's staff time to go to whenever they have their committee meetings and all that other stuff.
So that's like once a quarter.
I got, I got a feeling, I got a feeling the guy in question is gonna be more than once a quarter. That's what he's gonna want.
No, the city schedules the meetings.
Yeah.
Maybe once, once, it could be twice a year.
Okay, you have to answer his question.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of doing it, but, you know, obviously, that's up to you guys.
So the bottom line is that the agenda item is discussion of reinstating the senior center board. And, and, uh, I, I'm, I am full-blown supportive of, of, um, of people being involved that have a passion and, and, but I will come back to what the mayor said. And that is, I've heard from one person, one person, multiple times, and he's a good guy and he has good ideas. But, um, we need to look at the context of this, which is that in my mind, if we've got activities planned and we have people that are engaging in those, and I have attended now several of the activities, uh, including the, what is it? The ukulele, yeah. I mean, my goodness, they, that, we filled the. Yeah, I mean, my goodness, we filled the place up with people playing ukuleles. I didn't know ukulele was that big a deal. And, and. So i- if, if there is a ground swell of support for other kinds of activities that can be named, then let's look at it. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. My wife's retired now, she's willing to volunteer. But if. If we don't have any complaints and people seem happy, then what are we trying to fix? That's where I'm coming from.
One point I'll disagree with is it's only one person saying this. I think that's, I mean, I might just be talking to more residents right now. That's why I'm hearing more things about Loma Linda in general, offering these services. Part of it is people don't know about it. But even in the Veterans Village, which has, you know, senior residents. One thing they've said is like they want more activities. And that's where I see the benefit in this, is it's going to be part of that.
Who wants more activities? Are you hearing from multiple people?
Yeah, that's the point. Like it's, only one person is coming here to speak about it. But like when I talk to residents, they've talked about wanting more activities within the Loma Linda.
And what kind of activities?
I didn't get in that depth of conversation of what type of activities, but that's what I think this would do.
That's where we're at.
Yeah, and that's what this thing would do is like identify those type of activities that would stay within our budget and whatever resources we have, right? It would have a forum where people can talk about it. And I, I don't think it has to be a regular meeting, like this is one. It's going to be a few meetings where you're identifying what's needed. And then we would make, they would make that recommendation to staff. What can be, can be implemented will be implemented. And if it can't, because we don't have resources, we, we can't do anything about it.
So with, with, with every. Council that, or advisory council for whether it's hills or trails or whatever, historical, whatever. That requires a city council member to be a part of it. Are you willing to be a part of this to help stimulate what only one person is asking for?
Again, I don't think it's one person, that's.
I'm only, I've only heard from one person, that's all I can say.
Well, the first part of your question, like if this is something the community wants, which is what I'm hearing, like I'm fine.
From who?
What do you mean from who?
You're hearing that there's a ground swell from whom? I'm not hearing it. I'm hearing from one person.
Right, that's, that's what I said. Maybe it's because I'm talking to more residents right now. Whether that's senior residents that have their own homes or if it's someone at the Veterans Village. That's the audience that I'm talking to right now. So they are the ones that are saying they would like to see more activities.
I would, I would point out that the senior center is in Councilman Daley's district.
So I think I get to make the decision. No. No, I, I'm not opposed to it. I'm not opposed to it. All I'm saying is that I'm hearing from one person. I have heard no complaints from anyone else and not just in my district, but in the city. Never. Everybody seems happy with what's going on.
Right, and the two things I said is, one, again, I'm just talking to more residents right now. So I know this is something that's on the top of, or at least one of the things on their minds. And second, I don't think that this is something that needs to be a labor intensive or finance intensive committee. They're not going to be saying, hey, we want $20,000. We're telling them what we have to play with. And if they can do that advertisement for us to bring more people to be involved. And if they can help the staff with ideas and activities that they would want to see that would attract even more people. I, I think it's a win-win for all of us.
Okay, so one of the complaints we've had in the city council is that we have all these subcommittees. And there's always a councilman that's appointed to a subcommittee. And the vast majority of the time, the councilman doesn't show up. I've heard that over and over and over for years. And, 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 and when I show up to the Parks and Recreation Committee, people are stunned because what are you doing here? You know, we never get to see a councilman. And so are you ready to take this on as, as a councilman to help mother this whole issue? That I don't even understand. I don't know what we're not doing that we should be doing. I don't know.
Here's, here's my concern is that we get into something now. Council time is one thing, that's, that's free across the board. But, but the staff time and the staff involvement and I, I already hear enough that, that our, our particular gentleman spends a lot of time. Spends a lot of time with staff as it is, right? Is here at City Hall a lot, asking a lot of questions, is taking up a lot of staff time as it is. I, I, I would, I would tell you this, that if we ever got to that position where we were going to do a committee on this, I would, I would strongly. I would probably look at other people to be on that committee as opposed to somebody who's definitely got an agenda that they want solved. I would look for somebody else on that committee because my concern is that, that, that this particular person sees this as a way to get more authority or power over the city manager, where he's not getting enough of what he wants right now.
And in fairness to him, he's told me multiple times, he won't be on that. Guiding committee.
Really?
Yeah, he's told me that several times.
Wow, okay.
That he doesn't have to be on it, but he wants more activities. And I'm saying, what kind of activities? And he says, well, look at Highland, look at Redlands, look at.
And that's the challenge I have is that we don't have that money. We're not those places. And, and every time he comes in and says, I could, I can go to Redlands and I can do this class there. And I can go to Highland and do that class. And I say, that's awesome. I'm glad you have that ability to go to those places and do those things. But with our budget deficit, I just don't see that as a priority right now.
So aside from one person, again, I think there's still opportunity, whether that's working with the university or some other nonprofit. That's what this board would be for. I, I think the idea or what this comes down is like, can we allocate two hours for a meeting every quarter from staff? If the answer is no, we have not two hours to allocate, then that's it. But if we can, then again, I think this would be a win-win.
Do we ever have ad hoc committees instead of setting one up that's ongoing and quarterly and all that? Do we ever have, set up a committee where we invite people to come and say, please come on this day and share your ideas of what the senior center should be all about?
Like workshop.
Like a workshop.
We've done workshops for the development stuff, yeah.
Maybe that's something we could do.
Because when you have a board, it's require a notification, a posting.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm saying like a workshop type thing where it's just open forum, anybody can come by, give them some Thai food or something.
Yeah, they have more people. Again, if a, if a workshop at a senior center where they're already there. And, and we have a workshop and, and ask them for, hey, what do you like to see? What like, what kind of activity you like? I'm willing to do that, I think, because we get more input from the senior that already attend.
You just solved the world's problems tonight, sir.
He, he prayed for this outcome.
So, so how about this is a discussion item, how about I do this? I will. Next week, well, I will post it and then at a senior center. And then schedule sometime next week or the following week to have a workshop out at, at a senior center. And, and since you retire now, you're welcome to attend. Because it had to be during the day because the senior will not come out at night. So, so it would be during the day and, and.
I'm not volunteering, I'm volunteering my wife. She'll be, she's retired too.
But, but.
I'll join her.
I want to say that I, I stand behind the, the city manager with his decision on some of the things. Like I know one of the things that's been brought up multiple times is, is having computer classes and things like that, you know? The city has had some cyber attacks that have.
Jarv addressed that issue in an email to us.
Yes, right, right. And that's, and that's absolutely, that's, those are, those are, those are some of the reasons, like. We, we have to be careful with some of those things. So my concern is. Well, one, one of the requests is that we do more computer education. And, or that we have free Wi-Fi access there. And, and I think the concern is that we open ourselves up to potential cyber attack issues. You know, like Lieutenant Smith talked about last year, the, the sheriff's department had a cyber attack and they lost almost all of their data, paid millions of dollars ransom and all that kind of stuff. And that stuff has happened here to the city. We just haven't had any catastrophic failures because we have great IT people. But there are reasons that, you know, sometimes some of those things just aren't feasible.
But I was stunned if I read the email correctly, that we had over two.
Two point seven.
Two point seven million hits. On.
One month.
Yeah, in one month on, on our, and so it's not a small issue. But. At the same time. I can't figure out Medicare. So, you know, I gotta believe other people have that problem too. So I see the need for it.
That's what I was hoping the library would do it for us.
Okay, I think I get the direction. Let me, let me post some workshop at, at, at a senior center and, and hear from them and see what they're looking for. I, I, I want to add, Lynette, want to add one more items. Lynette. We need a representative from the city to, to be on the SCAG board. An alternate and also California JPIA board or represent, which a lot of times is I'm the one who attend the meetings and for the city. And but, is that right, Lynette? So.
Yes, I'm sorry, I lost my screen here. Yes, I received notice from representative from SCAG asking that I can provide the delegate and alternate to attend the annual general assembly, which is in May, May 2nd and 3rd in Palm Desert, the Marriott Desert Springs and Spa Hotel. And I also received an email from Veronica Reese, Reese, from the California JPIA also requesting for a representative from the city, a director and an alternate to attend the annual board, board of directors meeting, which is July 24th in La Palma.
For what is that?
The Joint Powers Insurance Authority?
I've actually been the member on that for years. You didn't know that? No, Jarv goes.
He had brought you to La Palma at, at four, five o'clock in the evening.
To talk about insurance?
So I usually do the SCAG.
He's done the SCAG before.
But is there, like, do we need an answer now? Can we wait until after the next meeting or until the next meeting?
Well, they've been asking for, they need to, this information. They need to, they're both asking for a, a delegate and for an alternate. I think for JPIA, because I think last year you were, so like we had Jarv, but they said it had to be a council member and not a staff person.
So I, I volunteer to be alternate. I, I, I volunteer to be alternate for both because I end up going for both of them, so.
That's fine. If Jarv doesn't go, I'll volunteer for SCAG because I have more than a casual interest in SCAG.
Okay, so I will. So you, I'm sorry, you'd be the delegate.
Should we, like Mr. Jindal says, should we wait till our reorganization meeting?
I know that was another item. Because we have the elections and we won't know until April. I can respond to them and let them know, you know, we're in the election season and if we can provide that information. And I can get back with council.
Well, we, we know that Councilman Daley will still be here. The, the other three of us, we don't know.
I'm fine if Dr. Daley wants to do it now. I'm also interested in SCAG, so depending on what happens in March, I'd love to be a backup.
Or SBCTA.
Well, then we would have to wait till March for that.
We don't have to because there are people all the time that get unelected and get replaced.
Yeah, but there's no meetings for any of these coming up, right? Is there a SCAG meeting or a JP, JPIA is in the summer?
It is, is May, is May 2nd and 3rd, so you have time. So you, so you can, you can be delegate right now and, and I can be alternate.
But that's what alternates are for.
Insurance conferences are awesome.
Alternates are still about to go, right? Yeah, we send both, I mean, it doesn't really matter.
So how about who want to be a delegate for JPIA? The mayor, you want to do it still? Again, I attend, I mean, I, I.
I nominate Phil.
It's that one thing a year that we do, don't do really. Good job, Jarv.
Okay.
Thank you. So going back to SCAG, Councilman Jindal would be the, we can put him as the delegate. And then Council, Mayor Porten would be the alternate. Okay, thank you.
That would actually be a good one. I mean, I would like to see both the primary and alternate attend. Those are more, more fruitful. All right, so any reports of officers?
No, sir.
Any reports of council members other than what we just talked about? No?
No, I don't have an item except. Where are we at with, with? Panhandlers? Because I'm, I'm, when I go down Mountain View and get on the freeway, I've got panhandlers that are knocking at my window. Is that illegal or is it okay? Or what, where, where are we at with that?
It's, it's not illegal to be homeless.
Yeah, no, I understand that. Can they, but it's okay for them to sit in the median and knock on my window?
There's, so there's a, there's a, there's a decision, there's a Ninth Circuit decision that really governs all of this. It's out of Idaho, it's called the Boise decision. And.
It's out of Idaho, that's a problem.
Well, it's in the Ninth Circuit. That's the problem. So. It's actually making its way to the Supreme Court. Supreme Court has agreed to hear it. Several states, including our state, our governor have filed an amicus brief in support of the argument that at some point. We are infringing on, if, if, so San Bernardino just got served an injunction by the ACLU. They're not allowed to move any homeless people from anywhere in public, period. So if they want to set up full-on cities out in public, they can do that. And there's a, there's an, there's an injunction that they're following. I think there is a hope that the, the Supreme Court will clarify some of this because the argument is at what point does a person infringe on my rights to freely move through public space? Such as a public park or, or a city building? And the problem is it's getting out of control in some of these places, especially LA and things like that. So I, I think everybody's waiting to see what that answer is going to be. But right now it's, it's a delicate kind of song and tap dance. Because there's a lot of cities that are being sued and getting into trouble over moving homeless along. And you can kind of understand some of it if you look at it from a humanitarian aspect. The, the problem is some of it's getting out of control. And so it, it's very interesting because our state and other groups that have traditionally been very progressive are really hoping that the Supreme Court's going to hand a, a definitive decision down to government where we can address some of these issues. Did I cover that correct, Dan?
Well, so does that mean I just let these guys knock on my window and ignore them? Or send them to Leonard's house? Because I'm ready to pitch a tent in front of his house and he's running for.
Well, we could send them across the pedestrian bridges. I'm sorry. It's a, I don't know.
So it, it is what it is until it gets resolved at a higher level. Is that the bottom line?
Yeah, you, you know that California last year signed a law which basically says the police can no longer stop people for jaywalking because that was determined to be too prejudicial and racist. So. I mean, you're, I mean, it's, at some point, the public has to decide that they've had enough with some of this stuff. There has to be a balance, right?
I've had enough.
Yeah, I know. Sorry, that didn't answer the question.
But the question is, which side of the political divide is arguing for carte blanche for homeless to camp forever? Who's arguing for that besides the ACLU? Who's arguing for that, besides the ACLU?
Mostly the ACLU, and some of these.
But progressive politicians are arguing against it.
They're starting to.
Conservative politicians are arguing against it. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how it can stand review with that kind of.
The problem is, there's been so much, there's been so much case law in place already. You know what I mean? And so, when you establish certain rights as, as those common rights now, how do you? I mean, it's gonna take.
Supreme Court has a lot of power.
Wow. We'll see.
It's a, it's a difficult issue, and cities everywhere are struggling with it. So, I can, I sent a memo to Montclair, kinda outlined the issues, and it discusses that case, and I can send that on to, to you as well.
You already sent it to me.
Oh, I did already send it to you, okay, okay.
Because John Dutre, who's mayor of Montclair, I think, he and I have talked about this multiple times, and he's frustrated too.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're not alone, it's a problem that every city's facing. And, those who have been proactive have sometimes just bought themselves lawsuits and things like that. So, everyone's waiting to see what the Supreme Court does with this particular case.
Okay.
I, I'll say this, you, you don't know, you really don't know, you know, what, what a person may or may not be. The other day, there was a transient down at Redlands Boulevard in Anderson with a gun, waving a gun around. And, off-duty, an off-duty sheriff sergeant ended up helping get that guy in custody, right? It, it just, you, when we talk about the gamut of all the drug use and mental health issues and all that other stuff, you, you gotta be careful. So, I wouldn't confront those people. Yeah.
But I would say that you absolutely can call dispatch, and we could, you know, do what we can. Calling dispatch?
As bad as our traffic is, I think he'd clear the intersection before you arrive.
There you go.
All right. I think we are done with our city council agenda, let's move into the housing authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted there?
No, sir.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on a non-agendized housing authority, please come forward. Milford, you still awake? Seeing nobody coming forward, we'll move on to the scheduled items, which we already had our joint meeting on the budget, and we are left with the consent calendar. First by Dr. Rigsby, second by Dr. Daley.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar on the housing authority agenda as submitted, please vote. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Any old business, new business, reports of members or officers? Seeing none, we'll close that, and we'll open up the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted there?
No, sir.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on a successor agency, a non-agendized successor agency item, please run forward. Seeing nobody on that, we have the consent calendar. First, and a second by Dr. Leonard this time.
Sorry. Motion is to approve the consent calendar on the successor agency as submitted, please vote. Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, I believe in any reports from officers or members. Seeing none, that concludes all of our agendas, thank you very much.